Good morning, everyone. Before we start the meeting in earnest, I just want to give instructions to all the guests on the Zoom call is that the board members will remain unmuted during the duration of the meeting. But as a guest, you will remain muted during the duration of the meeting. And if you have a project on the agenda, you'll be asked to unmute during that when your project appears on the agenda. And we ask that you remain unmuted during that discussion. If you have background noise, you may mute yourself, but you will not have the ability to unmute yourself. So we ask that you use the wave function at the bottom of your Zoom screen or physically wave or send me an email and we will unmute you should you choose to speak or would like to speak. So with that, I will turn the meeting over to Tim.
Good morning, everybody, and welcome to our meeting on a windy, blustery day. The first thing that I would like to do is ask Jasmine to take a roll call of the board members, please.
Jim Dean.
Present.
Mark Doyle.
Present.
Kathy Bauer.
Present.
Amy Bondediri.
Present.
Jamie Ficcone. Don Sagliano.
Present.
Al Torjani.
Present.
Thank you. If everybody's had a chance to see the meeting agenda, you'll notice that there are some projects coming before us. And I just wanted to ask if anybody has a conflict of interest that they need to declare at this time?
Jim, Don Sagliano, I have a conflict of interest on item D. So it will be moved out to a meeting room, so to speak, during that discussion.
Okay, and what is your conflict on that project?
We, the company I work for is a tenant in the subject property.
Thank you very much for disclosing that and we'll make sure that we take you out, recuse you from that discussion. Is there any other conflicts that need to be mentioned? I need to mention that I have a conflict with the Fox Run at Fulton project. So I will have to move to a waiting room during that discussion. My firm has had, I became aware that my firm, a member of my firm, has had some discussions with the principals of Fox Run about insurance matters. So I will excuse myself and Mark Doyle will conduct that part of the meeting. Anybody else? Okay. Can someone confirm for me, Sarah, that proof of meeting notice was posted?
Yes, the meeting notice was posted on March 12th.
Okay, are there any bills and communications that you need to discuss with us right now?
No, not right now.
Okay, next step would be the approval of the prior meeting minutes. Those are from January 13th, 2021 and March 3rd, 2021. Has, does any board member have any corrections or modifications or comments that they would like to bring forth about those minutes? Okay, Jasmine, could we take a vote for the approval of the, I'm sorry, I need a motion to approve minutes.
They're moved, Mark Doyle.
Thank you, Mark. Can I get a second?
A second.
Al Torjani, I heard you. I'm going to put you as the second. Jasmine, could you please take a roll call vote on the minutes, please?
Don Sagliano.
In favor.
Al Torjani.
In favor.
Amy Bondediri.
In favor.
Kathy Bauer.
In favor.
Mark Doyle.
In favor.
Tim Dean.
In favor. Thank you. Okay, next thing, report of the treasure, financial report. I'm sorry, I see a can.
There was minutes from the special meeting held on March 3rd, Chairman Dean.
Yes, I thought I'd mentioned that the approval was the January 13th minutes and the March 3rd minutes.
Okay, fine, thank you.
No problem. Report of the treasure. Okay, Marilyn, do you want to handle that?
Yes, good morning. Looking at the balance sheet, the IDA currently has 2.5 million in cash available. If you see down at the bottom of the balance sheet, accounts payable is at 517,000. Those are just pilot payments that were going out and they have gone out after the end of the month. Looking at the income statement, again, pilots have come in and gone out, nothing else unusual. The admin fees for January and February, zero. However, March, we have had three closings so far. And for March, our fees are 450,000. So we've more than met the budget of 218,000. Does anyone have any questions?
I don't hear any questions and we do not need to vote on this. Is that correct, Sarah?
Correct.
Okay. So we do, the next thing on the agenda is the report of committees, finance and audit.
Good morning, everyone. This is Kathy Bauer. So the Finance and Audit Committee met with our auditors, Linda Hannigan from RBT CPAs. And we went over the draft of the audit for the year ending December 31st, 2020. If we move on to page three and four, you will see that our administration fees and closings decreased from 2019 to 2020 by 289,000. And our expenses actually decreased significantly. And that was primarily due to the IBM deal that did not go through in 2019. But we had the corresponding commitment to the Duchess County Tourism that we had already paid out for 1.4 million. So our change in net cash position actually shows a positive of 1.1 million because expenses in 2019 were 1.6 million, down to in 2020, 490,000. We had closings approvals that went through for 2020. In January, we had the Shop Right supermarket. In May, we had 2328 Creek Drive. June, we had the Arthur May Redevelopment Project. In November, we had Hatfield Metal. And then in December, we had two, the US EF and Violet Estates. The next page, we show our cash position at the December 2020. We had cash in the bank of 2.2 million. Also, we had Cricket Valley escrow deposit of 1.7 million. And that also in the liability section, we have the corresponding liability for that Cricket Valley of 1.7 million. So our net position at the end of the year was 2.2 million. Let's see, what else? If we move on to page nine and 10, the accountant states, you know, that everything was under generally accepted accounting principles. We have a cash policy of all deposits being FDIC insured. We have an investment policy in place. The agency issues bonds that provide capital financing to private sector entities. And we are a related party to the Duchess County LDC. Pages 12, 13, and so forth, show all our bonding projects. It is noted that Bard College, even though we approved at the end of the year to refinance that and that was to be moved over to Duchess County LDC, that transaction did not get paid off until January 15th of 2021. So you will see it on the IDA's audit. And the auditors do have confirmation of that transaction and when it did occur. The next several pages show all of our projects, the corresponding jobs that were recreated and retained. And the auditors did not find any concerns for internal control findings, nor were there any compliance findings. So that was a very quick synopsis. I don't know if anybody on the committee or Marilyn or Sarah have anything else they want to add.
Can I make a comment?
Sure.
This is Marilyn speaking. I just want to note on page two, the top of page two is the opinion of the auditors. So their opinion was that the financial statements referred to are, in all material respects, representative of and presented fairly of the IDA's position. Also note that no journal entries or adjusting entries were made by the auditors. The auditors accepted the financial statements in GL as presented by us to them.
And if I could also comment, Marilyn, thank you for mentioning that. And I don't want that to go by without my comment that that is not always a common statement that's on a financial audit. And so I would like to commend you and the other staff for doing such a good job during the year that no corrections to journal entries were necessary. So thank you.
Thank you.
So does anybody else have any questions about the audits? Okay, so what I would like to do, we do have to approve the audits. So if there are no other questions or discussion, I would like to ask for a motion to approve the 2020 audit.
I'll make that motion.
As written.
Thanks. Don Sagliano made the motion. Al, could you second that motion?
I could second that motion.
Thank you. Okay, Jasmine, would you please take a vote?
Amy Bondediri.
In favor.
Don Sagliano.
In favor.
Al Torjani.
In favor.
Mark Doyle.
Yes, in favor.
Kathy Bauer.
In favor.
Tim Dean.
In favor. Okay. So under unfinished business, I think this is probably as good a spot as any for me just to bring up a subject that we have been talking about within the board and myself with Sarah on a general basis. The board has felt, has become more and more uncomfortable with their ability to evaluate some of the more complex aspects of projects that come before us when it comes to the pro formas of applicants and how those, how do they portray the benefit versus the cost that taxpayers would receive from the projects after the granting of tax abatements and pilots? And so we have been looking at the possibility of either having, bringing some professionals in third parties to run a workshop for the board to help us in a value, better understanding our fiduciary role and also to educate us on that subject. And we also, from talking with other IDAs, have found that some IDAs, based on the scope and size and requests of projects, have actually asked third parties, third-party professionals to provide them with something called a reasonability study, you know, and some analysis of the information provided by applicants. And so we have been looking into that. And what I think is going to come forth over the next couple of meetings is we're going to probably talk as a board to see if we want to revise or set a policy about when and if we need the skills of a third-party analysis on projects. And so there's more to come on that. Right now, we don't have a policy about such reviews. And, but it doesn't mean that if we felt for a particular project that it might be beneficial to do so, that we can't, you know, utilize a third-party to do that, that type of analysis for us. What we have heard and what we've seen, just again preliminarily, is that there are a couple of different levels of analysis that can be done. A more basic one can be turned around in probably as little time as a week. A more comprehensive one could take a couple of weeks. So the other important factor here, of course, would be making sure that we still are able to work within a timeframe that doesn't hinder projects' abilities to move forward. At the same time, you know, it would also, if it's a large project that were to come before us and we had a policy like this in place, the fact that it could take, let's just say, two to four weeks for a complex, more complex analysis, it would mean that it would be very important for applicants not to come in at the last minute and expect a quick decision. So again, we are trying to, what we're trying to do is balance our obligations to make sure that we do the right, right thing with our, also with our mission, which is to spur economic development in the county. So more to come on that as we get information that Sarah's, you know, looking into for us as far as who can do these types of things. But we do anticipate that we will have some discussions in the near future about perhaps setting a policy based on, again, size of project or benefit being requested. Does anybody have any questions or do I need to clarify that more with board members?
I think, Mark Doyle, Tim, if I may?
Yes.
I think in addition to the discussion about, you know, third-party analysis and some assistance, I think part of our discussion previously has been basically a review of our mission and ability to analyze, well, in terms of the benefit to the community so that we have a clear understanding of the components of benefits accruing to Duchess County residents.
Yes, so, so again, the use of a third-party professional would be only a component of a policy that we may adapt. That may be the way that we achieve part of our policy, but it would not be the, you know, the sole policy. So yes, we certainly, again, I think it's a desire by all board members to make sure that we fulfill our fiduciary role of providing benefit and encouraging development. But at the same time, being reflective of the fact that taxes are collected over time and when its sales transactions take place, because those are needed by the taxing jurisdictions to do what they do. So, you know, we want to make sure that we don't, we don't remove that benefit from those entities without good reason. And certainly, we all know as, as members of this board that, you know, to this point, you know, we have done our best to do that. And we certainly want to keep our area competitive with other areas in the, you know, future economic development to the benefit of everybody. So again, a difficult balancing act, but we do feel that we want to make sure that we're getting, we're able to interpret and to understand all of the information that's given to us when we make our decision on the benefit of a project versus the relief that's given to the developers. So, and I think that the area that this has been most challenging for us recently, just because of the number, has been in the development of housing. But this, the same issues can apply to other areas as well. So with that, with that general comment, you know, the first project that I'd like to bring before us is one that, yes, I'm sorry.
One thing I do want to add, if I could, is that it's really, this third-party would just shed additional light to our analysis so that it isn't in replace of anything that we've done, but to really provide the board with as much information as possible when they make their decisions to use these projects.
Yes, yes, we still retain the full right to make decisions on projects, you know, based on our evaluation. And yes, it's not, it's not that any evaluation that we had would be some clear-cut no or go no on any project. So our first new business topic, if anybody, does anybody have any questions or comments before I move on? Sarah, is there any other unfinished business?
No, no, we can go on.
Okay, so the first up item of new business is actually a project that we had already approved in the past. And they are coming to us because of requests to amend the agreements, to add a couple of additional parcels, and also to ask for some increased sales tax exemption benefit and also mortgage recording tax. Sarah, do you want to take this or do you, does Don, how do we want to handle this?
I can, I can start it and then maybe Don or Liz can add in. But like Tim said, the project before you is MHTC Eastdale Villages. They are an active project with the IDA. And as such, no action by the board is required today as they, you know, are active. However, they will be having a public hearing and then a final amending approval of these benefits at a future meeting. And so prior to that, I would, we wanted the project to come and make a presentation of their request for the amendment. In addition to the benefits that they are asking for, this new scope will also include the addition, additional creation of 32 FTEs above the original projection. So with that, I don't know if Liz or Don, is there anything that you'd like to add?
No, I think that this is something really for the applicant to make the presentation on the need for it. But understand this, this is, this project as originally presented has had the full support of the town of Poughkeepsie and the town of Poughkeepsie is creating a new town center. And the project has had significant success. So it's really now whether the town continues to support this and the expansion. And then I would just ask the applicant to then make their presentation.
So this morning, we have, thanks, thanks, Don. This morning, we have Joe Kurchoff, John Hedinger, and Gene Snieringer representing MHTC Eastdale. So Joe, did you want to go ahead?
Hey, John, why don't you pick your line? Sure, sure. Well, it's wonderful to see everybody this morning. Thank you very much for having us, as always. As mentioned by Sarah and Don, as well as on the agenda, we are requesting permission to incorporate two additional parcels into our lease premises, along with an increase to our sales tax exemption benefit of slightly less than $287,000, an increase of our mortgage recording tax exemption benefit of slightly more than $661,000, and a two-year extension for the overall project timeline for completion of Eastdale. And as Don mentioned, we have accomplished quite a lot at Eastdale over the last several years, thanks in very large part to the individuals on this board and the DC IDA. Over 200 apartments have been delivered into the market and released. Six businesses are currently operating on Eastdale Avenue, which is the project's main street. And 10 more businesses are expected to be operating on Eastdale Avenue within the next year. We very much hope and invite anyone and everyone to come and see the fruits of our collective labor at Eastdale so you can see what's come out of the ground since we started. But since we initially entered into our master agreement with the DC IDA, a tremendous amount has obviously transpired as well, which has precipitated the need for this amendment. First and foremost, like many, we're licking our wounds from COVID-19 in a number of respects. In no particular order, supply chain issues have significantly challenged our ability to obtain materials, period, but also in a cost-effective manner. The cost of fundamental building materials has risen dramatically, which has been well documented, and has a direct negative impact on our budgets and exacerbates the pressure on the rents required to make the buildings within Eastdale economically viable. And similarly, in following on that, the decision-making paradigm for any given commercial tenant is just dramatically different than it was 18 months ago. The set of considerations that a business owner prudently has to take into account when they make a long-range consequential far-reaching decision for their business, such as owning or leasing new real estate, is just set against a whole new set of considerations that they, they didn't frankly have before the pandemic. You know, at the same time, we know much more about what Eastdale is going to be than we did three to four years ago. And what I mean by that is we had a site plan and a programmatic layout. But ultimately, the way the project was going to take shape was going to be a function of demand and who was interested in coming to the project, who was interested in participating, and what they wanted their real estate to look like, feel like, and function. So what could have been a one-story building three years ago, may be a two or a three-story building now. What could have been a three-story building three years ago, may be a four-story building now. So the density goes up, the costs go up, the capital intensity rises dramatically. And all, again, all this is happening against the backdrop of the pandemic and, you know, items that I mentioned previously. MHTC Development has also acquired neighboring land parcels, which have become integral to the project's optimal development and operation. And it just, whereas we didn't own those parcels at the outset of the master agreement, enveloping them into the project now just frankly makes all the sense in the world and will allow us to complete Eastdale in the best manner possible. As Sarah mentioned, the countervailing positive that we have to all this is that the project's propensity for job creation has grown precipitously as well. So we're looking to add 32 FTEs to the requirements of the project pursuant to this amendment. And again, that's a function of what Don alluded to earlier, which is we have been able to create a tremendous amount of interest, demand, early successes within Eastdale, and activity begets activity. So the more that we can keep that flywheel moving, the better. And it obviously raises our, our level of optimism to the project's overall success, which is the town of Poughkeepsie's success, which is Duchess County's success. So in summary, density is up, costs are up. The environment is challenging, but we're persevering through it. Capital intensity is dramatically higher. But we're doing the things that we need to do to make the project successful and continuing to move forward. And this amendment is very targeted to enable us to get to the finish line in a way that is befitting of what has been done already. So happy to, happy to expand on that at all. We obviously truly appreciate the forum to be able to come before you and discuss these needs. And I note that Jay Basely is on the line as well. And if he is permitted to speak along the lines of what Don had mentioned, he may wish to do so as well.
I just got a text from Jay, John. He got dumped off the line. He's going to try to get back on. But just a quick overview of the projects that are under construction. Just run down quickly, Rossi's Deli at 6,800 square foot. Rossi's Restaurant over 2,000, Freddie B Boutique at 1,200, Pizzeria Posto at 1160 square feet, Vertolosi Physical Therapy at 1,500 square foot, Sweet Bakes Cafe, 1,000 square foot, Crafted Cup and Their Bakery, 2,000 square foot, the KPMI Office Headquarters at 6,000 square foot, Daffodil's Gip Store at 1,500, Eastdale Bagel, 1,500, our clubhouse, which is about a 5,000 square foot building. And we have now started, since the town of Poughkeepsie approved, the expansion of our residential buildings on the east side over on the Wapuju's Creekside. We're under construction on two buildings there, one at 55,500 square foot and one at 63,180 square foot. So we are working feverishly, as John said, to try to pick up the two months we lost during the shutdown and the time we have lost with material delivery delays. I mean, everything from windows to lumbering processes. We, we've had our struggles, but it's the job. So we're very proud of what has gotten done there in two and a half, three years. And we look forward to just working with you folks to keep grinding on it and make you all proud of what we built.
Okay, so if Mr. Basely comes back on, we certainly would like to get his input. We would welcome that. I'm going to lead off with a few questions and I'm sure maybe other board members will as well. The 32 jobs that you mentioned, are those, those are jobs, I would assume, that are coming with the tenants that are renting space in the project? Is that correct?
Overwhelmingly, yes. Overwhelmingly, yes. The, the increased density of apartments probably is going to add some management staffing as well. So that is factored into it, but overwhelmingly it's additional job creation from businesses.
Okay. Could you comment or could you provide a little bit more specificity in regards to the increase in materials costs? You mentioned that, you know, everybody knows about them and certainly we have read about them and experienced them personally when we're trying to buy lumber and things, but could you put a, you know, a percentage on that that you've seen since you initially, you know, budgeted this project?
Joe, do you want to hit that one?
Sure. So at the time I wrote the letter with John to you, the board, Sarah and the board, lumber was up around ninety-one percent. We're seeing, that number has actually grown since that, this letter. We're seeing fairly large increases now in steel. We are seeing significant increases in copper. The PVC pellet market has gone through the roof, meaning that the pellets that are used to make PVC electrical conduits, which we have tens of thousands of foot of four-inch and six-inch pipe under the ground for fiber optic and power and data, is that all the things within the site, our camera systems. So I actually don't know of anything that has stayed the same or has gone down, Tim. It's all seemingly just climbing and sadly it's climbing weekly. So we'll price something out and we'll get a call in 10 days and/or a week and it's up another three to five or 10 or 20%.
Thank you. So just, and again, I, I'm gonna, I just want to, I'm going to throw a doubles advocate argument out there for you folks to, to respond to. You know, one of the things that we're reading is that the COVID pandemic has changed things. And one of the things that it's changed is that many more people are going to work from home and look to, to buy within walkable distance or within deliverable distance. And I would think that would be something that would favor a project like this where you folks very, very wisely, you know, created this walkable community concept and have brought the businesses and the residences within a close, close proximity. And so that's a positive for you and I think would should help with attracting businesses. The other part of that too is when you increase your density on a relative basis, doesn't that reduce your cost per square foot for units of apartments, you know, overall? You know, I know it's an increased cost, but doesn't the scale of that, isn't that in your favor?
It doesn't on the vertical, Tim. It does on the land. So the site work proportionally raises, like all the parking that is immediately around grows. So a, a, a square foot of blacktop with the prep is a square foot of blacktop, right? So there's no efficiencies in size. But the land acquisition, the original land acquisition that we started with 15 years ago and have added to over the years does in fact get spread out over more units and that does help the numbers on the land acquisition probably more than anything. And that was our, one of our discussions with the town of Poughkeepsie Planning Board when they did recently, in the last couple of months, approved us on three of the buildings on the east side to go from three-story to four. It helps buffer some of the costs. It's really the only thing we have in our, in our holster per se that we can do to lower that per door cost.
Got it. So, so in effect, under normal conditions, that would have helped you positively, but it's really being offset. What you're saying is it's being offset by these material costs and things like that.
Correct.
Okay, I'm going to open up the floor to other board members. Questions? Don, it looks like you might have a question?
Yeah, yeah, I do. I got a couple of questions. I'm looking at the cover letter that was presented to the agency on March 2nd and looking at page three, and I don't know if Mr. Headinger or Mr. Kurchoff could touch base on that. So when I'm reading this, it says that there's already been a mortgage recording tax exemption of five hundred and fifty-four thousand five seventy-nine. And you're looking to increase that by six hundred and sixty-one thousand or to six hundred and sixty-one thousand?
By six hundred and sixty-one thousand.
Okay, so that's, that's more than, more than the original request. And I was wondering if you could speak to that as to why it has increased so substantially since the original applications were done?
Absolutely. It's, it's really a product of all of the factors that we just hit on and what, what Joe just referenced. All of which go to dramatically increasing the capital intensity of this project. So taking something that was going to be of a certain size and of a certain cost and nearly doubling that has frankly just necessitated more debt, more equity. The ability for us to continue to help commercial tenants think through their capital needs and usage and perpetually be recycling capital back into the project and reinvesting into Eastdale, reinvesting into Dutchess County. And it really, it's a direct line between the amount of growth, the amount of cost increase and where that fund, where those funds have to come from. And it really, again, it just, from, from what we knew about the project in 2016, 17 and 18 to what it's become today and how we think about managing resources and liquidity, that's a very, you know, targeted number for us and, and something that a lot of, you know, a lot of thought has gone into.
So could I follow up on that if you wouldn't mind? So are you saying that the percentage of the project that is being, the, the money being contributed, more of it is from debt than from cash? Or are you saying that the size of the project has doubled in, in scope?
The costs have gone up dramatically and, and a lot of that is, is pure material cost increases. A lot of it is also just the, the amount that we are developing there has gone up a lot. And so anytime we're taking a project through the development process and, and turning it from land plans, approvals, bricks and sticks, and we're turning it into a piece of cash flow and real estate, we, we look at how we can then put more permanent capital, you know, onto that piece of property, take whatever value we have created through that development, recapitalize that and put it back into the next thing at Eastdale. So it's, you know, continuing to perpetually reinvest anything we do, the, the fruits of whatever productive real estate we're able to put into service and take that and put it back into the project so that it keeps going until it's completed.
Chairman?
Yes.
Follow up, please?
Yeah, absolutely.
So if I was to do the math on this, the original mortgage recording tax exemption of five hundred and fifty-four thousand five seventy-nine, if we use the factor of point zero zero seven five, is that accurate, Council Capellino? Thank you.
Yes, yes, Don.
If you do the reverse math on that, that, that was a total mortgage indebtedness of seventy-three million. By increasing the mortgage recording tax exemption by an additional six hundred and sixty-one thousand, that adds eighty-eight million dollars to the borrowing. So are you saying that this is now a hundred and sixty-five or a hundred and eighty million dollar project?
Hundred and eighty-four.
And if I, okay, great. I got another question, Chairman Dean.
Go right ahead.
So in the next paragraph, you talk to, you talk, you speak about the sales tax exemption, looking for an additional two hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars. And if I do the math on that, that's about three point five million dollars in taxable materials. Is that accurate?
Incrementally, yes.
Incrementally on top. So in terms of the mortgage recording tax, it's much more than the relationship to the sales tax exemption. Okay, I just, I just wanted to be sure that the numbers were all adding.
You're right.
And that was, that was sort of my follow-up was it sounded like more of the capital going into the project was coming from debt as opposed to, you know, capital contributions.
And, and just the comment on the first page, it says that you've had a ninety-one percent increase of raw materials. Another, another applicant that's in, in this meeting speaks that they've had the price, their price of lumber has increased three times. So I know it's somewhere between there depending on the activity, but yes, I can certainly vouch for the fact that all raw material with material costs are increasing, whether it's PVC pellets coming out of Texas, obviously that price has been impacted by the freeze down there as well as lumber and, you know, the loss of moving materials around the country with the significant increase in fuel prices. So thank you, Mr. Headinger, Mr. Kurchoff.
Thank you.
And Don, I'll, I'll tell you, on the lumber, it, whether it's two or three times, actually depends on what you're buying. Okay, so dimensional lumber versus LSLs and LVLs in certain heavyweight trusses are, we're seeing, it's not all eleven hundred dollars a thousand board foot. We're seeing big variations and there's some on this Zoom that can attest to that. No, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Any other board members have questions? Quick, quick question. How, how have you been able to do with your utilization of local labor workforce? How has that been going?
So right now it's basically, Tim, the same exact team that we've had from the beginning of the job. So we're running in that. Sometimes we're, we're down closer to eighty percent, but we're running in that between eighty and ninety percent, depending on the month and depending on what we're actually building.
Sure.
But we're very proud to say the team that we established two and a half years ago, we have added to that because of the sheer development speed for which we're traveling. But we haven't gotten away from anyone that we were originally using when we have met with you in the past. They're all still on the job.
And by and large, very healthy in respect of the pandemic and the site conditions that we're establishing and the protocols for COVID safety.
Great. Any other questions from board members?
Mark Doyle.
Yes, Mark.
Quick comment. I think that in the analysis, you know, there's sort of two ways of looking at this and the one is as the incremental portion of, you know, adding to the scope of the project. And the other perhaps that is useful is that we had, had this been the full scope of the project at the outset, you know, what, what would our response have been to the application? And I'm sure it would have been, it would have been the same. So I, I'm, I'm advocating for looking at the project as a whole.
I think that's a great comment and that is a perspective that we, we, I also advocate. And just if I may, we'll take this to a vote, but I, I would comment similarly that this project, when it was presented to us back in the beginning, it was really one of the first community, you know, walkable community projects. It was something that was endorsed and fit in with the master plan for the community that it was in. And I think it did take a bit of risk on the, on the part of the investors and the developers in it. And so they've done what they said they were going to do when they started. And, you know, we're, we're, we are looking at this and had, had they known, actually what, what they're presenting to us is an improvement over the initial project. So had they outlined it to us from the beginning, I think we would have, we would have supported it. So I personally also do not see any reason why we wouldn't want to make this amendment since it only takes us further along in this project, which has really been, appears to have been beneficial to everybody. So unless there's, oh, Joe, you wanted to say something?
Chairman Dean, it looks like I'm seeing here that Supervisor Basely is on.
Okay. If we could unmute Supervisor Basely, we would love to hear his comments and about the project and his feelings on behalf of the town as to whether this is something he feels should be granted.
Tim, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm on the road. So whether I can stay on or not, this has been a phenomenal project for the town. It's been a big boost for the town. The board in general has not reviewed any changes to this, but my personal comments, you know, working with Kurchoff and the group out in Eastdale Village, this has been something that's been super beneficial to the town. And it's a project that I've heard you guys discussing early that is off the ground. It's working very well and it's full as you can see now. So it is definitely something that's beneficial as of now.
Do you foresee the need for any approvals, further approvals in order for this, these changes that they're asking for to go forward?
I don't think there are any changes that affect anything that's not in the pilot already. So I don't see where it would be a big issue. We will bring up a town board level to have them look at it, but I don't think it's anything that warrants further discussion with, with us. Any further approvals, it's things that are already in place that you have now. So I don't think there's anything different that's going to be changing.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Basely from the board? All right. At this time, what I'm going to ask for is if a board member would be willing to make a motion in support of the
Tim, there's, there's no action required by the board this morning. This is just a presentation. They will be having a public hearing and they will come back to the board for their final approval for the amendment. So this is just
Yes. So, so yes, because the project does not require preliminary approval, but because of the changes, it does require a public hearing so that the, the public will have an opportunity to provide comments and input. So at this point, I think we'll, we'll schedule the public hearing and then we look forward to the, the final amendment.
Thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you, folks.
Yep, by now. Okay. That brings us to our next project discussion, which is by T-Rex Hyde Park Owner LLC. And I think we're going to have a somewhat similar discussion that we, to what we just had in regards to their project. So Sarah, would you like to kick that off?
So yeah, so next on the agenda is T-Rex Hyde Park Owner. They are the project, also known as Bellfield in Hyde Park along Route nine across from the culinary. As a reminder, the project entailed improvements on the site, the construction of a, some infrastructure, a sewer system and as well as the main project, which was the hundred thirty-three room hotel. Similar to the prior applicant, they are asking for an increase in their sales tax benefit. Again, this project had and still remains to have the project, the support of the municipality, the school district as well as New York State. They rewarded a, a consolidated funding grant application at the onset of the project and, and continues to have the support of the state. So with that, I'm going to turn that over to Tom Mulroy, the principal of T-Rex.
Good morning, everyone, Tim and the board. Thank you for your time this morning. Sarah, Marilyn, Marilyn, thank you. You guys have been a great support, also keeping us up to date with things. Joe, great job to share your, your, your anxiety and pain in this market and a great project. I've been by it a few times and I frequent it quite a bit. So great project. So we broke ground, just a quick overview. We broke ground in July of eighteen for what we define as phase one, which was the heavy main infrastructure to activate the entire site as well as to prepare the site for the first of two hotels. The first of two hotels, as you know, is a hundred and thirty-seven key ground-up five-story steel concrete residence. And we're excited to get going on that. We were supposed to break ground when we picked our building permit up in mid-last year. A construction lender just pressed the pause button and said, let's, right in the middle of COVID, let's, let's just sit tight. a construction lender just pressed the pause button and said, let's, right in the middle of COVID, let's, let's just sit tight. We have over $30 million into the ground unleveraged. It's just cash in the ground. Unfortunately, you don't see a lot of, of, of the project. And what's interesting is the town supervisor and the chairman of the planning board drove by when we put the lights up just recently, the main entrance and the stone wall and called me all ecstatic that they, they see things going on. I was like, where, where have you been the last year and a half, two years when there's 30 million into the ground? And I made him look at the sewer plant underneath, which is quite, quite a project. When the hotel begins, that's a $41 billion project. That will, we're anticipating, we have a conditional commitment with a new construction lender. So we're not going to wait for the existing one. And we feel that'll very strongly that'll close in the next 30 or 45 days and we should start shortly thereafter. Our building permits picked up and again, the hospitality industry has been hit extremely hard in general, but we're excited to, and given this location, that the amount of interest to get this moving in the financial markets is as strong as it is, given the market conditions. We also, what we're requesting is on the hotel, we currently have around 9,700 of value of goods, taxable goods for benefit of about $790,000. We're looking, asking, requesting an increase of about 6.7 million of the purchase of eligible goods for an increase of about $551,000 for the hotel. The site work, we currently have a benefit of about $132,000 for a million 625 of a value of goods. We're looking for an increase of $450,000 for the purchase of eligible goods for a net increase in benefits of about $36,000. We feel main infrastructure is pretty much done, the horizontal infrastructure. We're, we're actually took this pause in the market over the last nine months to plan for phase two, which will include close to 180,000 square feet of commercial. And phase two will have close to about 350 to 400 residential units mixed between for sale and, and for rent. We've updated our entire concept plan, the plan, and it's in the process right now. The town has been great. Aileen Rohr and Michael Dupree have been great, very excited about taking this time and updating that concept plan and starting immediately once all that's approved. And you know, that we're looking forward to work with you and hopefully we can continue through that the costs have increased. We do have backup. I have Larry Knapp from PC Construction on the phone as well to give backup. He's in the front lines of the construction industry side and he can give any backup of increase if anyone needs that. But that's really what we're requesting.
Okay, so lucky for you that Joe had to answer some of the, the general questions first. It sort of establishes the baseline of discussion for all of these things in regards to cost. And we certainly, we certainly, I think are, are educated on that to some extent. And, and also the cost of, of delay in getting these things done. So I'll open it up to board members. Does anybody have any specific questions around the, the request?
I have questions.
Yes.
Like over at Eastdale, everyone, everyone knows of the shutdown with the construction industry. Obviously, we're very familiar with it. And once they opened it up, everybody went gangbusters, like even over at Eastdale, they jumped right on the opportunity to get going again. This project, they were working on infrastructure. Why didn't they go to the hotel? Cause that was supposed to be, the infrastructure was quite far along. I mean, I drive by it every day. I am Hyde Park resident. And we get a lot of questions, why aren't they building the hotel? What's holding it up? Was it a, a problem, like you said, with financing or because you know, dollar for dollar, what the Eastdale is looking to do, their increases quite a bit for the value versus their tax increase and your sales taxes almost double theirs. And, and I'm kind of curious to why, because you're only saying it's a $2 million difference in value. Unless I misinterpreted that.
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't understand the $2 million in value in between what the value of goods? No, yeah, it was 9.7 million we currently had for a tax of benefit of, of exemption of $789,000. The increase of cost for the purchase of goods and services across the board was 6.7 million as an incremental amount, which increased about 551,000 for the sales tax. As far as the hotel, the starting date for that, we took a long time to get that building permit. It, it's, it's not an easy process in particular to get. We actually received it, I think, June of last year and right in the middle of COVID, the beginning where it was a lot of uncertainty. Our construction lender, which was on board, our cash is in the deal, ready to go, certified pad, ready to go vertical, decided to press the pause button. It's tough to argue to a, a bank, a local bank and say, hey, come on, build a hotel while the world's melting down, especially the hospitality industry, which has been the hardest hit. Unlike residential or retail or office, which is all, have all been hit. Hospitality is probably the number one target. And I can't, you can't argue with a regulated bank in June, July last year, when we're supposed to break ground to, hey, come on, you know, let's build a hotel. So we, okay, we're okay with the pause button. It's better than having a half constructed hotel or a completed hotel at the time. So we took that time and we updated a lot of things on the site to prepare for phase two. So when things loosen up, we right away, not only start the hotel, but we start phase two. So we didn't just sit here and watch, you know, the birds fly by. The main infrastructure is a lot of it's going to benefit future phases like the main, in, in, main entrance, the side entrance, construction entrance, north entrance, all the underground work, the oversized pipes for the sewer plant, the sewer plant itself, which is not an easy task. We, we, so everything's pretty much done. It's within, you know, just final touch ups right now. DOT is signing up on the front entrance. So the hotel unfortunately was, the hospitality industry was hit hard. We still have our building permit and we're ready to go. We just picked a new lender. It's unfortunately, it's not a local lender. All local lenders are out of business right now. They're not doing hospitality at all. And we, we feel like the one we just signed up about a month ago, we feel very confident they should close in the next 30 to 45 days. And right away, Larry's gonna, his guys are sitting there with a shovel in, in his hand and they're ready to go vertical the minute we shoot the gun off. But unfortunately, COVID really hit the hospitality industry hard, but we didn't waste time and we continued to push the project forward. Unfortunately, everything that we've done, most of it is underground. So people don't see that. The lights in the main entrance when they went up about a month ago, I think people were applauding. I think it's been good. Our social media platform to keep people involved has been constantly updated. Both the Facebook and the, and the website to keep people informed of what's going on. And, and that's where we're at right now. But we feel.
Yeah. So I, I think it, it is the, the answer, if I would just take the, the, the specific question Al asked. The, I think this, the, the fact is, is that hospitality hotel projects had their financing put on pause. In comparison, I think to the, the other project we just talked about, because it was residential, commercial, financiers were still willing to loan those types of projects because the, obviously we all saw residential actually demand for that increase up here. So, so are you comfortable, Al, with the answer he gave about the incremental cost of the sales tax, that portion of it?
Well, that portion of it's fine. Yeah, I, I could tell it had to be a financial thing because obviously everybody knows we're building the hotels down in Legoland. And as soon as that bell rang in June, they kept going. I guess the risk for their particular finance company, they must've went, hold on, you know, that they thought the risk too great, which I can understand that.
Sure, sure. And then it could have been a timing issue too.
Yes.
Okay. Other questions from the board?
Mark Doyle, I have a question, not so much about costs and so on, but I recall that when we first discussed this project, one of our concerns was to set a condition so that we were fairly well made certain of the development of the second phase of the second hotel. And so there was a timeline on completion of the first or the start of the second, I guess, maybe. And I just wanted to make sure maybe Sarah and Don counsel whether whether we're still within that timeframe.
Yeah, yeah, we're still within the timeframe, but I believe they're asking for an extension of time.
That five year?
Yeah. So the, the agreement was that they, they show a commitment to build the second hotel within five years of the completion of the first hotel.
Right. Yeah.
So that's what I was looking for. Thank you.
The Mr. Mulroy, on the, the phase two that you were referring to, I heard you mention housing. Is phase two for you, where, where is the second hotel in your thought process right now?
Right now, the second hotel, depending on timing, is either phase three or going to be part of phase four.
Okay.
The Shanner Group would like to start that six months after the completion and opening of the first hotel. That's game plan.
Okay. So that you're comfortable that that still can be within this time extension that we're talking about here?
That's correct. Yes. Cause it, it shifts, it shifts everything going out based on it.
Okay. Any other questions from board members? Okay. So Sarah, is this a similar situation where we do not have to vote, but it does have to go to a public hearing before we make our final decision?
Correct. So they were here to, for presentation so that the board had the opportunity to hear about the project before it went to public, to a public.
Okay. So we have had accomplished that. And after the public hearing, we'll take into consideration comments from the public and then we'll, I'm sure you'll be back in front of us for a final consideration and approval. All right.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Okay. So the next project is the one that I have a conflict on, Sarah.
Yeah.
So are you going to put me in a waiting room and then call me back? Or how do you want to handle that?
Yes. So Rachel will put you in the waiting room and then I will text you to let you know that the board has finished their discussion and then you'll be let back into the meeting.
Okay. So Mark, I'm, I'm going to let you take it over for now.
Thank you, Tim, and we'll hopefully get you back at the end of the meeting. Good morning to everyone. And Don and Sarah, I wonder if you could just set up the project and then let's go from there to questions.
Sure. So in front of the board is Fox Run at Fulton LLC. The, the owners and principals of Fox Run are proposing to invest approximately $17 million to develop a property located at 60 Fulton, also known as 10 Campus View Court. This property is located across the street from Maris Campus, very close proximity to the Hudson Heritage program. What they are proposing is a 93,000 square foot structure that would consist of 69 residential units ranging from one bedroom to two bedrooms with a den. The building will also offer amenities to its residents, including a business center and co-working space. The applicant is asking for sales and mortgage only. There is no pilot involved in this project and the creation of three jobs, three direct jobs with this project. This morning we have, joining us, we have Kelly Leibert, the consultant on the project as well. Amy, is there anyone else from your party here?
I think Jerry Komatos may be on, who's the attorney for the project. I'm not sure if he's on or not, but he, he may be.
Okay. I don't see his name. I
Okay.
I do see a phone number. Do you know with an extension 923? I don't know if that's him.
If he isn't on, I think I'm okay carrying the, the project this morning. If he, if I need to defer back to him after the meeting, I can certainly defer back to him with any questions. Okay. Would you, would you like me to do a short presentation?
Um, sure. So yes, if you could do a presentation.
Is it possible I can share my screen?
Yes, I believe so.
Okay. So as Sarah had indicated, thank you for that introduction. I'm Kelly Leibert with Page Mark Associates. And we are seeking IDA assistance in the form of sales tax and mortgage tax exemption only, not a pilot. Of course, we're the third in the queue today for the same justification for the sales tax and the mortgage tax exemption. Primarily because of COVID and the significant increase in the cost of construction materials. I actually own a company that sells construction materials as well. And so I can attest that the costs are just skyrocketing and every day we're seeing such fluctuating pricing. This particular project is a new project on a separately created parcel. As you had indicated in the town of Poughkeepsie over by Maris College. And we were originally proposing to start construction on this project in 2019. Of course, COVID hit and everything stopped. There was a significant value engineering of the project to try to bring construction costs down. And you know, because we have such an extensive investment in the soft costs and the approvals for this project, we really want to move forward and, and you know, build this building. So that's why we're here before you today for the sales and mortgage tax exemption only. This is just a site plan. Really, it's been done and approved by the planning board, just to give you a sense of where this property is. It is over where the former Avelo paving site was. I think most people know that. It's adjacent to the newly acquired Duchess County and yet to be developed rail trail and on Fulton Street. Sorry, sometimes this lags a little bit when it's on a Zoom. The project, as you had indicated, is 69 one and two bedroom units. We've worked very hard to create really a live work situation. So there are many amenities in the form of meeting rooms and conference rooms, areas, et cetera, fitness center. So we've tried to create a place where we now know that people are living and, and working in their same facility. And so we've worked to redesign this building to accommodate that. Just providing you with a few of the elevations. So you get a sense of what this is looking for. It's really a modern building. It's been approved by the planning board. As Sarah had indicated, the highlight 69 one and two bedroom units. We're happy that this project is going to be accessible to the rail trail. So a lot of great physical amenities for the people who are living there and hopefully connections to other projects in the town of Poughkeepsie. I'm a town of Poughkeepsie resident, so I'm very excited about this project. The construction for this project, again, you know, this number, as Joe and Tom had indicated, almost varies, you know, every, every week. So when I prepared this, the construction was 14 eight, it's actually hovering a little bit over 15 million at this point. Soft costs and other professional fees, you know, we're at $2 million for a total cost as we had presented to the IDA around 16.9 million. Again, we're seeking the sales and mortgage tax exemption. So when we do the calculations, utilizing your form and our best estimate on what the product and materials are going to be, the sales tax exemption is approximately 446,000 and the mortgage tax exemption is approximately 116,000. So that's really the summary. It's a little bit more brief than the other applications. Again, just because it's the sales and the mortgage tax.
Okay.
I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank, thank you very much. So overall, this project is a bit different to those that we have considered mostly in the past in that there is not a, you know, manufacturing or a commercial business component to it, although Sarah confirms it's a, it, it fits our guidelines in terms of a, a commercial project. Correct. So I think that you know, questions I have are really surround the issue of value to the, to the community. So in, in sort of in principle, IDA is providing public benefits, benefit of tax exemptions for the purposes of stimulating the developmental, the investment, but in order to receive public benefits in the long term. So you know, I think that our analysis is very sensitive to the, to the input values that, that go into the, to the analysis. And you know, I have a sort of number of questions around that, but I'd actually be really interested in the comments of other board members before going on in the, you know, I'm. the comments of other board members before going on um in the, you know, I'm make that last statement in the light of the discussion that we'd had um in the beginning uh before entertaining the applications uh with uh Chairman Dean discussing uh the reasonability study. So um let's just hear other people's opinions and uh we'll go from there. Anybody have a question?
Kelly, have you um Al turned you any, sorry. Have you guys, because you you're very familiar with the cost increases, how they're changing. I think every fifteen days, we're all getting locations twenty percent increase, fifteen. So it like like the Eastdale and then the uh T-Rex project, they got bombarded all at one time. You haven't even started this yet, but do you have escalators built in? So you may not have to come back for additional um sales tax going forward or or?
You know, it's something that I want to look at and just, I want to, so Mid Hudson Construction is our um CM for the project and they've um we're to the point where we're really ready to buy out um some of the major trades. Um so the answer to your question is, no, I wanna, I wanna just take a look at that again and make sure that we do have escalators in there. It it's interesting and Al, I'm sure that you can attest to this. It's um almost as if in the last month, the the materials have increased more significantly than they were in the past. We thought that things were going to level down. We thought by now lumber was going to be at, you know, pre-COVID or even near pre-COVID pricing. And it hasn't. It's as if it's almost a um uh abuse of the pricing, it just keeps going up and up and up. So I'd like to look at that again and just make sure that um we we do have escalators in there. I don't think we're going to be significantly far off um on our numbers. We've been, you know, paring it down, paring it down. So I'd like the chance to just come back before the, you know, the final meeting and just give you, yes, we are comfortable with Mid Hudson's numbers and they're ready to buy some of these things out. But that that is a risk, Al, as you know.
Yes. Yeah, well, I'm looking at your construction value and uh your your material values and it seems like it it could change, it could change quite a bit, but I would definitely check the escalators.
Okay, okay, we'll do.
Getting hit.
Does anyone else have a question?
Yes, uh acting Chairman Doyle. And this may be more ministerial. On page seven of the um application package, it lists the company name as Fox Run at Fulton LLC. But then under page eight, it it's the check mark says it's for a for-profit corporation. So I think that may be a um oversight by the applicant.
A good, good point, and we'll address that. I'll make that change.
Yeah, uh this probably is a good time to raise this, the the resolution before you uh indicates that it's Fox Run at Fulton. And as we were going through this and having discussions with council and and running uh the names of the entities, uh they've determined that it is Fox Run at Fulton Three. That's the proper name. So anywhere in that resolution, when it's presented, uh that that's what um should be uh stated. Elizabeth, you have something to add to that?
Yeah, she's uh muted. She just needs to be unmuted.
Can you unmute her? There you go, Elizabeth.
Yeah, this is Liz Capulina. I just wanted to point out, the the updated resolutions are included in the board packet. They're just included elsewhere in the board packet. So the resolution before the board right now, it's page two hundred and ninety-five of the full updated board packet. And that has the Fox Run at Fulton Three LLC and um I know the company is going to be submitting an updated application reflecting the the proper entity name.
I just have a some sort of site questions. Um because in the application package, um wasn't exactly clear of the location of the building, the the one plan uh site plan that was on there um was actually, uh the building appears differently to what appeared on your uh screen this morning, uh Kelly. So uh I understand now that the the building is going to be on the corner of the lot where um a uh where site remediation has taken place. Um and also, uh then I have a question about, uh I'd asked this previously to Sarah. Uh this is a a separate parcel, and so is the access going to be um utilizing the same um gated access to the existing building or um what is the process? Initially, and then I have a follow-up.
Sure, thank you. That's a good question. The nine-one-one address for this property is ten ten Campus View Court. Um and the access to the property will be through the existing gated system. So there's a series of access easements and other utility easements um that we've prepared for the adjoining, you know, parcel so that access utilities, et cetera, can flow through the other property.
Great, and and it is going to be on a separate site?
It's a separate lease parcel. Um so there's one, the way that the town assessor has created this is there's um a separate lease parcel, so it has a different tax ID number for purposes of taxing, correct?
Right. Um and then in in general terms, what actually differentiates this uh building, this project, the use of the building uh from the the existing building that's on the site?
It's um the ownership of the lease and or the lease parcel and the ownership of the building is a separate entity.
And in terms of use, and I'm looking for, you know, the overall um again, uh value to the community.
The um the other adjoining parcel is um contains two buildings, so they're two four-story buildings. Those are market rate apartments that are predominantly uh leased to students that go to Maris College and other adjoining, you know, surrounding colleges. This property is separate. It's um different architecturally. It's different design, um different uh you know, images when you look at it from the other site. It is market rate housing. It's intended to be marketed at um uh professionals who are working and um will not be leased to to students, so it's going to be a separate uh, you know, project in and of itself and separate tenants.
Excellent. Um to what extent, in this discussion of um increase of costs of building, um I'm also aware of uh increased rental rates and sales uh prices in real estate um and wondering if you could give us a a layout of um what the projections are in that regard to balance the costs?
I I think that what we've done, um I'm not sure if we've given you the rents, and I can pull up that table if I have it. Um we have exceeded what we think and pushed as far as we can on the rates for the um apartments. Of course, no one knows what those rents are going to be a year from now when we have this building on site, but what we did is collected information from uh Finbar O'Neill's project, the one Dutton. We toured his building. We uh sought information from um Aral Baxter's uh apartments, and we tried to consolidate um and estimate all of those rents so that we could provide a fair projection on what we think we're going to be able to, you know, rent these buildings out. Interestingly enough, you know, this is just my perspective and of course, talking to some some of the other um building owners. Even though prices are escalating, there really is a max um that the community is absorbing with respect to rental rates. And so although I think it would be nice if we could pro um project our rents to correspond with the increasing in the construction cost, we're just not able to do that.
Right. Sarah, could you um help us all understand the um process here um and counsel too, in that um my understanding is we're we're again to be um voting on an inducement resolution and uh thereafter will go to um the public hearing. But um in the in the meantime, um what can we, what should we do to um to fill in the gaps of questions, I guess? And um and what can we uh initiate some uh degree of of sort of third-party verification of uh some of these uh projections?
Uh yeah, so Mark, the um the this morning, uh what uh Fox Run uh is asking for is, like you said, inducement or preliminary approval that will um uh approve the um setting up of a public hearing. And then the applicant will come back again in front of the board for their final uh resolution, final approval. Um at in between, meanwhile, we can, the board has the ability to ask uh the applicant for additional information, including the uh the performance or of um of a third-party study, if that's what the board chooses to do. So um so any, you know, any additional information outside the application that the board will want uh to be able to um, you know, examine and study the project is is up to the board, really.
Thank you. Very good. So um I, you know, we haven't actually had as an opportunity as a board to discuss in any detail the process of of obtaining this additional information and what exactly we'd be uh looking for. So it's a little bit of a precarious position to be doing this right in the middle of discussing an application. Um but but I do think that um what we have in front of us is technically a a a more difficult decision because um although there's no pilot involved, um we are dealing with a residential, not a manufacturing application. Um so does does anybody on the board have any any comments on this particular subject?
Yeah, I'm acting Chairman Doyle. Um Attorney uh Don Capulina or and or Liz Capulina, could you um instruct us again about um when a when a proposed project is in a distressed census tract area? Would that mean, what, does that mean anything different or special in any of our um discernment?
Well, it really uh is involved when we are dealing with uh any retail projects.
Okay.
Provision in in the um statute that says that there's a restriction on the board approving retail projects, but those, but it won't apply. Uh one of the, one of the exemptions from that restriction is when you're in or a J, a budding highly distressed area.
So that's no impact on this particular project?
Correct.
What, one thing to note is um the county, you know, does a uh county-wide to study, housing study, the planning of uh market rate housing and the vacancy rate. And the twenty nineteen report was just released recently um in February, and that showed one of the lowest vacancy rates in market rate housing um in Duchess uh county. And I believe the uh the the rate, the vacancy rate at for market rate housing was at one point five percent. Um despite the uh the um it growth that we've experienced last year um in the past couple of years in uh in uh housing projects.
Thank you. And and to some extent, uh the market forces would uh normally uh respond to that demand, correct?
Yes, correct. Um and then to to kind of mention what Kelly said is that while the market forces will um you know, there'll be adjustment to that uh uh for the housing. Uh for the applicant, they have stated that uh despite that, there's a, there is a limit to uh what the appetite of renters, of what they're willing to pay. And so the the assistance is required from the from the IDA to be able to uh provide a what market rate, what is considered market rate rent.
Right. Um so so um if we go ahead with um this um resolution and the vote in the resolution, um are we then still able to to ask where we are? I'm going to confirm that, able to ask um additional questions without um technically without adding verbiage to the resolution at this point?
Correct.
Yes, yes, that is true.
Then um at this point, if there are no further questions, um I would call for a motion for to uh vote on the resolution.
Chairman Doyle, I just want to add that I think this is a really important project. We need to uh increase housing of this type, kind of transitional for people either downsizing or graduating from college and finding a place to live to keep people in the community for future purchase of homes when they're ready to do so. And I think it's reflected that there's so many rental properties that are at capacity. So I think the more apartment-style housing we have, the better we are.
Thank you.
And I'll make a motion.
Uh so I think that um Al was up making the motion, and if you'd like to second that?
I'll second it.
Very good. Um and then I'll call a vote, Jasmine, if you'd like to take the role, the roll call.
Don Sagliano.
In favor.
Al Tojani.
In favor.
Amy Bonadiri.
In favor.
Kathy Bauer.
In favor.
Mark Doyle.
In favor. Uh um then that resolution passes and we'll go to the next stage and uh uh move through the process.
Yeah, thank you very much. Public hearing will be called and then they will come back again for their final approving resolution.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. We appreciate your help, everyone.
Good.
Thank you.
If uh
I will contact Tim to get him back in and then we can resume the meeting.
Thank you.
Hello?
Oh, there you are.
Okay, so are we ready to continue on?
Yes, oh, well, actually, yes, Don, we'll have to have Don Sagliano.
Oh, correct.
Be into the uh waiting room.
Are there any snacks in the waiting room?
Okay.
Check your fridge.
All right, so that allows us to move on to our next topic, which is um a new applicant, correct, Sarah?
Correct.
Okay, so um we have before us for consideration and approval, uh in this case, we will be uh voting on a preliminary resolution for uh Air Protection Packing Packaging Corporation uh in the town of Poughkeepsie. And um the these folks are looking to um have a project at the former uh Alpha LaValle site on Duchess Turnpike, just as a way of, you know, familiarity for folks. Um uh Sarah, do you want to um to to kick this off for us?
Sure, so um Air Protection Packaging Corp, or otherwise known as AP Packaging Corp, is a plastic manufacturer that manufactures um air cellular packaging, more commonly known as bubble wrap. Um they are currently located in uh Linden, New Jersey. Uh the company was started in two thousand and fifteen and has experienced uh um continued growth and rapid growth since its establishment. Um they have moved several times um uh to accommodate their growth and the opportunity to purchase the uh nine hundred Duchess or the former Alpha LaValle site came up. And they really saw it as an opportunity to uh own a property that would give them the capacity to continue to grow and establish and give them some stability um uh in their uh in their business. So this is considered a business attraction project. With the project, they would be bringing um or creating a hundred and five new jobs of to Duchess County. They currently have about sixty-five uh employees uh in their New Jersey site. They do expect some of their employees to come with the move, but um at this time, it's not determined how many of those sixty-five will come with the move, so um uh it is still a considerable um uh number of new job. So it is still a considerable number of new job, new manufacturing jobs to the site. AP Packaging is proposing to invest over $12 million in the purchase of the building as well as the renovations to accommodate both their corporate office and the manufacturing facility. It is about a 350,000 square foot structure. There's, there's a couple of outbuildings on it, but they will be mostly residing and most of the renovation will be happening in the main structure. And in the beginning, they will be occupying about 165,000 square feet of the building. They will be renovating the building to include some loading docks. And then there are some existing tenants in that building that will remain for the time being. So with that, they, I'm going to turn that over to, or ask Liz or Don, is there anything?
Yeah, I don't, I don't see, I mean, this is just a, you know, the application you you described it. The applicant should now make their presentation. It is, it is for preliminary approval. And so it is, and all of what you said was is outlined in the preliminary resolution, so.
And and to be clear, this is both a, they're looking for sales and mortgage tax exemption as well as a pilot.
Yes, and actually, they are asking for a deviated pilot. It's a 15-year pilot. They are in active negotiations with the school district and the town on the details of the 15-year pilot. They are both, both the school district and the town are aware of the 15-year pilot, and therefore, the details will be ironed out. That all will be, we will receive written endorsement of the 15-year prior to them receive or being considered for their final approving. So we should.
When the public hearing is held, it will be held as though they're, they're looking for approval from the board for the 15-year pilot. If there are any adjustments to that, the only adjustment that would be considered would be an adjustment downward. And the board would consider then the position of the town of Poughkeepsie, Town Board, and the Arlington Central School District.
Great. So Sarah, who from the project would like to speak?
So we have Kelly Leibert, Kelly Leibert, their consultant, and Michael Bluestein, their counsel.
Thank you. This is Kelly Leibert. Thank you, Sarah, for doing such a great summary. You really summarized a lot of what I was going to say, but I, if it's okay, if I could share my screen, I can just do a quick overview.
That would be great.
Okay. Again, as Sarah had indicated, the project location for this is in the town of Poughkeepsie. Again, as I had said before, I'm a town resident, so I am very excited about this project. I don't recall the last time a manufacturing company, you know, came to this area and certainly came to the town of Poughkeepsie. So excited about it. The location is the former, I call this the De LaValle Building, the old Alpha LaValle, Alpha LaValle Building. This is, you know, directly adjacent to the Eastdale project that you have just discussed previous to this application. And the company AP Packaging, again, owned by two brothers, has seen significant growth. They've been challenged with two constraints. One is finding a suitable building so that they can continue to grow. And the second is access to labor. They were fortunate enough to be able to find this building and are under contract to purchase this building. As Sarah had indicated, this is a 353, you know, approximately 1,000 square foot building. They're primarily going to utilize almost like the center, if you cut it down the middle, because that portion is vacant right now. As tenants leave, they'll acquire that space and grow into those spaces as well. They envisioned that Boses, who occupies the front of the building, was going to be out. Of course, they've seen some delays, and they're hoping that that's the next space that they can expand into. We are before the town of Poughkeepsie Planning Board for site plan approval for this project. So they're, you know, uniquely aware of what we're proposing. As Sarah had indicated, they're in Linden, New Jersey now. They've moved four times in the last seven years, and so they're very excited about the ability to purchase this building and then make this their future home. I think we had gone over this, it's AP Packaging, two owners. And this is a significant growth opportunity for them and certainly a great opportunity for the town of Poughkeepsie. In my opinion, I think this is a textbook IDA project that we would like to see bringing manufacturing jobs and an infusion of money into this building. What the applicant is proposing, it's it's sort of insignificant to this discussion. And, you know, I share it with you, but it's more appropriate to the town of Poughkeepsie Planning Board is their improvements to the building really are just the exterior of the building. They're going to be adding 12 new loading docks and loading areas for their deliveries and supplies. Other than that, there are no significant improvements to the exterior of the building, you know, mostly the interior, improvements to the interior of the building. So the details for the project, and again, this is my first, you know, presentation to this board on a pilot. So if you need any additional information, please, I will certainly get that. They're purchasing the property for $10 million. The current assessed value on the property is is 5.5. Their fit up is around a million, I think, as everyone else has said, that's probably going to escalate. They've already purchased equipment that's customized for this building, that's $1 million, that is in the process of being manufactured right now. They're relocating another 2.8 million worth of equipment from New Jersey into this building. And within the next one to two years, they're going to make another purchase of equipment in the realm of $3 million. As far as staffing, as Sarah had indicated, the breakdown, year one, there's two owners. Management will increase to seven, admin will increase to seven, and production is going to increase to 53 for a total of 69 employees when they move in. So that's their anticipation for this year. Michael and I have had extensive conversations with the owners. And, you know, based on their prior growth, we think that their increase in staffing is going to be significantly more than we're reporting. But we want to be realistic as far as the labor numbers, because we know that that's a, you know, highly analyzed number. So we've worked with him together to try to come up with what we think are realistic estimates for staffing. So for year two, the ownership will stay the same, management will increase to 10 employees, admin to 10 employees, and protection to 83 for a total of 107. Now begs the question, which of these are new? The owners anticipate that obviously they're relocating up here, and half of the management will likely relocate here. So they think that, you know, likely five employees will come. The balance of the employees, they believe, are going to end up being new opportunities here for this area. We are working closely with New York State in trying to identify grant programs to help them find labor and possibly training programs. Sarah's been fantastic at getting us connected with the people at the state to help with this, and we'll continue to work with Duchess County to try to identify how we can source these positions and fill these positions and then provide the necessary training. Project highlights, again, the current assessed value for this property is 5.5 million. The current taxes are 286,000. And again, the purchase price is $10 million. So the immediate question is, what what will happen after they purchase the project if this approval is successful? We've been working very, very closely with not only Jay Basely of the town of Poughkeepsie, but also the assessor in the town of Poughkeepsie, and with Kevin Sheldon at the Arlington Central School District, so that collectively, we can provide everyone with the information that they need to be able to analyze the resulting impact of this project. What I had provided the two taxing agencies is this Excel spreadsheet. We've been working together, all of us, on developing this, and it's a live document, you know, that can easily be adjusted. But the sum of this is, is as far as the assessor is concerned, how is she going to affect with an A the resulting assessed value of this property? Because the current assessed value is 5.5 and the anticipated sale price is 10 million. She has indicated, we've had extensive conversations, so that just based on the mere sale of the property, you know, she's really not able to adjust the price, the assessed value up to 10 million. So we've worked closely with her, and the resulting conclusion is that she anticipates that after this project is purchased, she, again, with rent rolls, could comfortably assess this property at 8 million. And so what we've done is we've created a 6% increase in the current assessed value, because that is the the bump in the town of Poughkeepsie on the assessed value for the 2021, 2022 taxing year. We created then the assessed value of 8 million in year 2022. And then thereafter, we applied a 3% increase per year. So if you do those calculations, and then at the end of the day, everyone wants to know, you know, how does this affect me? So if this project is approved with the IDA as currently proposed and the assessed values are held the same, the total taxes, again, town, school, would be around $4.9 million. If the project were not approved and the assessment were increased to $8 million. So again, she just would arbitrarily say, I'm going to increase the assessment to $8 million. Again, this was comparative purposes, the taxes would be $7.7 million. But the taxes that would be paid without the project, so if this project never went through and it just stayed the same at 5.8 million dollars or at 5.5 million dollars with the increases that we spoke about, the total taxes paid would be 5.8. So the two telling numbers are with and without the project. So with the project, the total taxes are 4.9. Without the project, the total taxes are 5.8. Clearly, there's, you know, more taxes that would be paid without the project, but you would also lose those ancillary jobs, the economic infusion, and then the future growth into this building. The telling is that the difference between those two numbers is under $1 million. And so we think that, you know, that's a, that's a insignificant number, given the economic benefit that we're going to see in the form of jobs and the economic infusion into this property. We, again, as Sarah had indicated, we've been working very closely with the town and the school. This is a very unique project. The applicant is trying to close on this property. I'm going to close this one minute, just so that you can actually see me talking. The applicant is trying to close on this property, and they've been working very closely with the sellers, which is Phoenix, who owns this building. They have extended their due diligence. And at this point, we've been advised that we're going to need to close on this building the end of April. Sarah has been phenomenal in working with us under this incredibly tight time constraint to try to work again with the town and the school on the planning board, and then with the IDA on trying to achieve this goal of of getting some sort of an approval so that they can close at the end of April. So I know I've probably given you a lot of information. I'm sure I've missed some things, so I'm happy to answer any questions if I can. I will certainly get that information and get it back to you as soon as I can so we can try to keep the momentum of this schedule.
Thank you, Kelly. I'll kick off a couple of questions, if you don't mind.
Sure.
And Sarah and Don, you can also comment about my comments if I'm misspeaking. But I think it's unusual that we have a project where the the taxes that would be collected if if it didn't happen are lower than or higher than if it happened. It's my recollection that usually a project brings in at least the same amount as what it would be without it. And so I guess I'm trying to understand, how could there be better taxes on a project without, you know, without the, you're making improvements to it, you're bringing it to a better use, it's vacant now. Why, why would the taxes be calculated as to be higher without you there?
So so, Tim, I actually have to take a look at that analysis, because I haven't. Because my my projections are slightly different than Kelly's in the sense that we are not taking taxes off the the property. The the property would, you know, they would pay what is currently owed, and then the, what we're discounting is the new assessment. So it's just a matter of fine tuning. We can, Kelly and I will work together and do that, so.
Okay, that would, I think that would, I would like to see that. That would make it much easier for me to to, you know, to consider as a starting point. And then, let's see, what was, oh, this is, I'm assuming that the taxes that you're talking about are over the term of of the pilot, is that correct?
Yes.
So it's a 15 years as proposed right now, correct?
Correct, yes.
Okay, you mentioned 286,000 was the taxes now at some point?
Correct.
Is that the total of town and school, you know, all the taxes?
I believe that is correct.
Okay.
Chairman? I believe that 280 includes the special districts.
That's what I was going to ask.
Without the special districts, the school and property tax would be about 240,000. Again, pilots do not include special districts, and those will be assessed at the full value.
Right.
So.
So along that line, just, you know, again, doing, you know, 240,000 times 15 years, that's 3.6 million, is what would be paid under the current taxes approximately. So that, so that's, that is the current situation. Sarah, you're going to take a look and report back to us on the proposed, you know, initial pilot payments and the and the amount over time.
Yeah, yeah, because my my calculations say that they would be paying 1.3, approximately 1.3 over what would be what they would collect over that three point.
Okay, so I, again, I would like to get a better understanding of that, of that difference, because that obviously makes it makes a significant difference to the the taxing jurisdictions and, of course, you know, helps them as well. The, I don't, does this have, do you think that this would have a material impact on schools? You know, number of students coming into the district?
I personally don't think so. I I think that the number of jobs, you know, I think they're going to pull from staffing in the area. I don't think that we're going to see a significant infusion of people from New Jersey moving into this area because of this particular project. So I I don't, I don't see any impact.
Yeah, to be clear, I'm not saying that's a negative or a positive. I was just curious about it. From the standpoint of, yes, the utilization of services for the school itself. Okay, those are my questions. Who's got other questions? I don't see anybody. Okay. Sarah, if you wouldn't mind, can we just talk a little bit in the application about the the other aspects of this, how it does fit in with our our targeted economic development? Maybe briefly, you could just talk about that?
Sure, so AP Packaging is a manufacturer. Manufacturing is an identified priority industry for Duchess County. It, so it fits into, it is a target industry. It is also an industrial applicant, which, you know, as our name implies, the Industrial Development Agency is the type of projects that IDAs were created to induce. So it's consistent with both the types of projects, both at the county and our agency level. And in addition, this project aligns with our our agency's mission statement about creating jobs and increasing the tax ratables for the community. So which we both expect to happen with the attraction of a new manufacturer into not only New York State but Duchess County.
Yeah, Kelly, the type of manufacturing labor jobs that we're looking at here, what is the skill level required for those positions?
Kelly, you're muted.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I do not have that information, and I will get that for you.
I'm just looking at it from the standpoint of the closeness to the city of Poughkeepsie and a potential labor workforce. There is some unskilled, you know, lowly skilled, I think, labor availability in this, in within the city of Poughkeepsie. And with the closeness of that, that could be a benefit to those job seekers.
Okay, very well, I agree.
Yes, and I and I would say to compliment, you know, Kelly mentioned a little bit about their, the company's trouble in locating workforce in in New Jersey. their, the company's trouble in locating workforce in, in New Jersey. And one of the advantages that Duchess County provides is that we have a very robust workforce pipeline. So not only for the residents of the city of Poughkeepsie, we have several workforce organizations that have, that run apprentice programs. We have a very robust council of industry, which is, you know, we're very lucky to have in the Hudson Valley. BOCES is currently, one of the reasons why BOCES is not moving out of the building is they are currently building a manufacturing tech center out in Pleasant Valley, which will also provide training for the target employees that AP Packaging would eventually hire.
And if you wouldn't mind, I apologize, but could, could you describe in a little bit more detail the exact product that they manufacture? I understand it seems that they take, they take a discarded product and make it into a newly usable product. Is that correct?
I will get you more details on the process. I've spoken to the owners and we actually, I wasn't able to do it, but a team visited the site. I would call this manufacturing and assembly. So products come in and it's the roll material for the bubble wrap. And it's produced into certain customized bubble wrap options. So, you know, we all get 10 FedEx deliveries a day. So there's large bubble wraps, small bubble wrap, different sizes and so forth, depending upon the packaging requirements. And so they're preparing those large rolls of bubble wrap and they'll, they're shipping it to people who are using that roll material. Their major clients are predominantly in the US, not yet overseas. But we all know that, you know, with the advent of COVID, you know, everything is being shipped now. So I think that's going to see, we're going to see a more significant growth. But I can get you more details on the actual process.
Again, it's, it's a more technical question, but I had thought that I had read that the use of actual bubble wrap was being reduced in the marketplace and being replaced by other forms of packaging, just because it was plastic. But it sounds like they are making more custom packaging than just, you know, the commodity of, you know, standard bubble wrap that we've seen in the past. And, and again, I may be also wrong about my assumptions, so, you know, I just.
I can get some questions or answers from him on forecast, but when we talk to him, it doesn't seem like there's any slowdown in the demand for the material.
Right, and I just wanted to, you know, I want it to be something that's sustainable over time as well. But it does absolutely sound like they're, the need for what they're making has grown, continues to grow.
Correct, and I think a lot of these companies are able to pivot and turn into, you know, and adapt into the new shipping materials, whatever they may be.
Okay, um, as, again, does anybody else on the board have any questions? Mark Doyle, I see, raise your hand.
Yeah, I'd, I'd love to make a comment and this is, you know, it's actually really fascinating that we're having the opportunity to consider this project and the Eastdale project, you know, in the same meeting. Because it's really interesting that developers were able to put themselves at risk essentially to come up and invest in the, in the concept of a walkable community in which you can live and, and eat and, and, you know, provide the residential components as well as now we have the excitement of, you know, job opportunities right next door. So it's really, in many ways, quite a futuristic development that I'm excited about. And I, and I think that as a whole, it points to sort of a policy direction for the, for the IDA. So I'm, I'm, I'm very pleased to have this application.
A lot of complimentary things about them, you know, when you, when you think about it, you know, the reuse of a, of a, a building that's been underutilized in the De La Valle site. Yet we have a new construction project for housing next to it. And the complimentary nature could, you know, certainly be there. Okay, I'm at this point, again, what we're voting on here is preliminary approval. We've, we've given them some feedback. We do have some things that need to be, I think, worked on, especially in regards to the taxes before it comes back. But the idea would be to grant preliminary approval today. It would go to a public hearing again, so that we have input from the, from the public and the community to consider as part of our, our final review and potential approval of the project. So at this point, what I would ask, if there is a motion from the board to, to grant preliminary approval to the project.
I'll make.
Go ahead, Al.
Al Turner, Danny.
Okay, Al has made a motion, can I get a second?
A second.
Okay, Kathy Bauer, I heard her come in with a second. So Jasmine, could you please take a roll call vote?
Amy Bundedieri.
Approved.
Al Tojani.
Approved.
Kathy Bauer.
Approved.
Mark Doyle.
In favor.
Tim Dean.
In favor. Okay, so we have granted preliminary approval and I look forward to hearing more as you come forth for the, the next steps. But it sounds like a very exciting project for our, for our county.
Great, thank you very much, everyone, I appreciate your time this morning.
Thank you. Okay, back to the agenda. So can we bring Don back in, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, we'll wait for that.
Yep, there he is.
Welcome back, Don. Okay, I saw him wave, he's on mute, which is good. All right, so our next subject for discussion is the 2020 Paris report. Sarah, I will let you do that.
Okay, so we have the 2020 Paris report. The, the information in the report aligns with the information in our audit. So nothing in here is different, that different from what is in our audit. The first part of the report is the annual report. The first few pages is just description of our agency. It also lists the board members. And so we just ask that you just make sure your information, the spelling of your name is, is correct on, on that part. The IDA, while it has staff, myself and Marilyn, we are not paid by, directly by the IDA. So if you look on page 7 of 52 of the annual report, it will say, you know, while we are employees, we are not being paid. We do not offer benefits to our board members or the staff in, in the form of a severance package, club memberships, use of corporate credit cards, personal loans, auto, transportation, housing, life insurance tuition, and so none of those benefits apply. The IDA also has no subsidiaries, so there is nothing to report under there. Pages 11 through 50, 11 through 15 are basically our finances, which again, are stated in our audit. They are restated in the annual report. The page 14 shows the amount of conduit debt the, the organization has. We did not issue any new conduit debt in 2020, so that is zero. The agency did not acquire any real property in 2020, nor does the agency own personal property. So those, our reports are done. We do have a real property report that has been prepared and it was approved by the board at our annual meeting and is also posted on our website. The next few pages, 18 through 52 are our project reports. There's nothing significant to report about these projects, but there are two things that I would like to make the board aware of. One is we are still waiting for the complete sales tax report from Cricket Valley. And so they are missing from the report. We do, we have a majority of those reports in from Cricket Valley. We're just waiting for a few more and we expect that to be very minimal because the construction at Cricket Valley finished in 2020 and the reports they're expecting, we expect those will come back with zero sales tax. Use are very minimal at that point. And then also related to Cricket Valley, this is the first year that Cricket Valley was reassessed at their post-construction value. And then the pilot payment is applied to that. So as, let me see if I can, Cricket Valley is on page, page 26 of 52 of the annual report. Cricket Valley post, pre, pre-construction was assessed at $1 million. And post-construction, new assessed value is, I don't have it in front of me, I'm sorry. But is at, I believe, over $100 million. And so the benefit, they're now paying their first, what we consider their true pilot. So it will skew our numbers a little bit in terms of benefits per job because of the scale of that project. Any questions regarding Cricket Valley? Nope, okay, so moving on then is our, the agency's investment report. You'll see a report that just shows where our investments are and how much we have invested in those accounts. Again, they are consistent with our investment policy, which is posted, which was approved by the board at the January annual meeting and posted on our website. And then finally, the last report is our procurement report. These show contracts that the IDA had that were over $5,000 in 2020.
So Sarah, just a quick question and maybe you could comment. I know in the past, you know, we've had, you know, again, always done our best to provide the information they need. But there's, there's always a couple of things that they come back and want us to do better. Are there some things that we did change from our last report to help us in that, in that regard?
So one of the things that we, Marilyn and I have been doing in the Paris report is we've been using the notes section to give a little bit more information about the projects. As we've stated in the past, Paris is a reporting system that is used by every public authority in New York State. So the, you know, agencies like the MTA to a water authority is required to use the same system. And so, and as a result, many of the fields in Paris are locked once you've input the system information for the first year, which constrains us in being able to report updates to the project. So we've, we've utilized that more. So if you go through the Paris report, you'll see some notes that we've added to combat that. But we, you know, the staff, we've done, we've taken advantage of every training opportunity that the ABO and OSC has provided us to, you know, be able to report as accurately as we can.
Thank you. Okay, so we need to approve the submission of these reports, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, is there any question, other questions from the board? Okay, I'm looking for a motion.
So moved, Mark Doyle.
Thank you, Mark. Could I get a second from somebody?
Second, Kathy Bauer.
Thank you, Kathy. Okay, Jasmine, could you please take a, a vote on the approval of the annual report, the investment report and the procurement report to Paris?
Don Sagliano.
In favor.
Al Tojani.
In favor.
Kathy Bauer.
In favor.
Amy Bundedieri.
In favor.
Mark Doyle.
In favor.
Tim Dean.
In favor. Okay, so that, I believe is the last thing we need to discuss in the IDA, is that correct? So we're going to, now, I think we need to pause for a second, right? And then move to the LDC.